And on top of the list is our grant writer Kara Stallman. And I hope you got about fifteen million dollars you're gonna let us have.
I don't have fifteen million dollars. Good evening, everyone. What I have before you tonight, and I think Sylvia will put it on the agenda for tomorrow, but I'm just here if you have any questions, is you know, we did the new water project down on County Road sixteen and County Road twenty-six. We're in the process of closing that project out, okay? And it's just gonna be a process. So you, I'm not gonna, this isn't the last time you're gonna see me for that project, but this is the beginning. And so what y'all just be approving are just all the final invoices, okay? There's some invoices for some of the materials. And then we still have to reconcile the matching funds and everything. And I'll be back, but the plan is to get the grant closed out by the deadline of March thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-six. And that'll make the county eligible to apply for CDBG grant next year. So the plan is just, I'm just trying to stay on top of this and working through the closing. But there's just the three invoices. There's some money to the equipment supplier, to the engineer, and then there's also some funds that would be from the contract for the grant administration. That's all that's before you tonight.
Okay.
If I'm here, if there's any questions on that.
Anybody got any questions for Kara?
Thank you.
Get it closed down, get another one.
Exactly, that's the plan, thank you.
Thank you Kara. Okay, Sheriff John Sheridan.
Good evening, ladies, lady and gentlemen. I'm saying ladies and gentlemen, just one word.
Lady, yeah.
Lady. Um, tonight, I'll just be asking for reclassification for Domingo Ayala as a part-time officer. And reclassification Rebecca Cox, night shift supervisor. I'll be asking for resolution to surplus vehicles and bull bars, to surplus them on gov deals. And also acceptance of grants. We've got two grants that our great grant writer has gotten for us. One of the things is, we're looking for a mapping thing. We'd like to map the schools and a lot of the different things, investigations as far as crime scenes, different things like that is what we're looking for. So one of the grants would get us that for the most part. There's gonna be some money that we'll pay probably from discretionary funds or whatever. Uh, the other is gonna be the cops grants. And this will be for two officers. Let y'all think about this, if, you know, how we need to do it, or if we need to do it, whatever, but it would be, first year would be hundred percent, second year would be seventy-five percent, third year would be fifty percent, next year would be twenty-five percent, and then some less. But it'd be for two, two officers. Uh, but that'd be it, it'd just be for the officers, no, no equipment, no anything, so it would be.
No benefits, right?
Well, it'd probably be, it'd probably cover that, but as far as equipment and stuff like that, it would not.
Okay. If you will, give a little explanation of that mapping, 'cause I thought that was very unique, and I see the benefit for y'all having that.
Um, as far as the mapping, uh, what it does, you can set it up in this room and it would diagram anything, chairs, wherever things at, pretty much to scale. Flags would be to scale, piece of paper over here and floor would be to scale. Those things are great, homicide scenes, different things like that. We're gonna use them, we're gonna try to map the schools, uh, you know, for, it kinda goes together, 'cause we've asked about this with our two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant we got for the big oil goggles and stuff. We can integrate that into that system. We could search Chilton County High School, we could active shooter type situations or whatever. We could do that in our investigation office out there in the classroom. And once we get stuff like that done, we can integrate it into that system. Even though we're in that room, it's gonna project what the officers are seeing, they're gonna be seeing the classrooms, they're gonna be seeing the hallways, they're gonna be searching live, basically what they've been doing with the school. But they can do it out there. But, you know, the doors are the same, the, everything will be set up the same once we diagram all this stuff with this mapping section. But it just, it comes in good for wrecks, uh, you know, of course, we don't work wrecks, but we, homicide scenes, any kind of violent type things, we could do, uh, diagram those type things, the schools for active shooter, you know, training and different things like that. It's just a, gonna be a great thing to be able to integrate with our other system we've already got.
I think it's excellent, too. One of the, I hope to God we never have an active shooter, but you hear on TV every time there's a shooter, where's access? Where's the hallway? Where's the door?
Right.
You already know it.
I mean, we, we have access to go and train, but we can, we could actually do it, you know, if it's during the school year when the kids are in, and we could do it there.
Yeah.
And still be doing basically what Chilton County High School, Jefferson High School, Thorbsby, Isabella, any of the schools that we could, once we get everything diagrammed, we could set it up and train in our own facility like that.
Oh, that's great.
It's a, it's a great piece of equipment, it really has a lot of uses.
Anybody else comment or question?
No, I think, I think that's great. I think that would be very helpful. Basically, it goes into a database, and they're able to know the layouts of public buildings. We could do all our county public buildings that way.
We could.
And have it, in case something happened, you can get a live feed off your tablet like that, so I think that'd be a great.
It is. Does great job, yeah.
All right, thanks, sir.
Thank y'all.
Okay, probate, uh...
Judge Calhoun asked me to cover this. He's asking for proclamation recognizing A.G. Brothers in their home for fifty years of service to our community.
All right, so that'll be on the agenda for us to vote on tomorrow night.
Yes.
Very good. Uh, Tim Little, revenue commissioner.
Uh, hope it's kind of short and sweet. Here with a request on wage adjustments, which is, uh, everybody's, y'all have all the, well, they have the, uh, evaluations, all that stuff, uh, just getting everything rolling.
All right.
Y'all got any questions for me on anything other than this? Any other questions? Okay.
Yeah, we good. Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
Enjoy your supper.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Sylvia Singleton, commission office.
Uh, tomorrow, uh, um, before, um, our meeting gets underway, there'll be a public hearing for the Dollar General store number three-one-oh-one-seven, uh, which I think is, the address is Marbury, but it's in Chilton County. So that'll be the first thing on our agenda tomorrow night. I have, um, on the excess bids, there are three possibilities of the excess bids that the attorney will have finished the paperwork, and, um, that'll all be brought before you tomorrow night. Progress edition, um, they've asked, again, as you have seen in your paperwork, to publish in the February two thousand and twenty-six. The two thousand and twenty-six severe weather preparedness tax holiday is actually in February, but we have a November deadline to get that in.
Okay.
Um, reappraisal carryover, um, we're carrying over, um, two hundred forty-five, one forty-five, forty-one. So we will get an approval to carry over the amount from the last fiscal year to the new fiscal year to make up their full budget. Um, we have been trying to cull old records, um, and of course, you have to, you have to contact the Department of Archives for a lot of this to let, to get permission to destroy records. We have gone through boxes and boxes of payroll records. Uh, payroll records are to be kept for a minimum of fifty years. The only thing we have taken out of those payroll records were duplications. We've kept all the documents we're supposed to keep, but there were a lot of duplications. There were a lot of those old dot matrix printouts and just worksheets and all that, so we have, we've cleaned all that out. There's some other records that have already been approved, uh, Makisha's made sure that they were approved by the Department of Archives. And it's about sixty boxes. And, um, I contacted Shreddit, who also does shredding for different departments in the courthouse. Um, and I think we can get those sixty boxes of documents shredded for about, it'll be somewhere between seven fifty and a thousand dollars. But we have that, um, LATCF fund, which was designated to, uh, be put into the courthouse fund. So this is the process we're going through so that we can make that move. So I'd ask that if you approve using the Shreddit, because I have to sign the documents for it, um, the money could be, could come out of that where it's already been, uh, set aside for those purposes.
Okay. Yeah.
These documents are just duplicates. We have to maintain certain records, and we maintain those records. These are either another copy of it or just a worksheet, but some of the, a lot of the documents have sensitive information on them, so we can't just throw them in trash.
I want to commend y'all, too, for the being proactive, being ready to move to the new courthouse, doing this. We've sent out a notification, Ms. Sylvia did, all, everybody in the courthouse to be prepared to move, uh, because once we give it over, if you've left it, tough, so.
Also included in that, um, obviously, we need to purchase boxes to put these things in, so, uh, but anyway, it shouldn't be any more than that. And I, and whenever it, if and when it's approved, I'll, um, I'll contact them, get a quote on it before going through with it.
All right.
So now we have nominations, uh, for the Chilton-Clanton Public Library Board. They've recommended Paula Mitchell to be reappointed. Also, the DHR Board has open nominations. They are wanting to replace Luding Hicks, and they have recommended Stanley Varner, so we'll open nominations for that. Of course, I'll have all the forms, uh, of which Kara spoke for, uh, the CDBG grant and for the chairman to sign those. When I gave my list of increases for these two employees, I use, I didn't raise them anything. I, I used the old, old pay rate, so I wanted to correct that so that they would get an increase in pay and not stay at the same pay. So if you will allow that correction to be made for their increases, I would appreciate it.
We wanna do both of them, or just one of them?
Oh, that's not the same one?
That's not.
No.
Okay.
Um, also, the Board of Registarians, uh, they'll be asking for a wage adjustment, which, um, you know, we all talked about this, um, in budget hearings, so, um, they are paid on a monthly basis, so this'll be effective October first. And that is all I have.
Wow. Got a real...
Did you say the Dollar General in Marbury is in Chilton County?
Yes, it is.
It's on one forty-three.
It's on the corner of one.
I've been by it several times, and I swore I was in Chilton County.
No, Chilton County land is almost to the bottom of that little draw down there.
It's on the corner of whatever, sixty-three.
We got another Dollar General. I thought it was in Chilton County, I'm sorry, 'cause I've been by it several times.
We're getting, we're getting Chilton County's tax money up there.
Yeah, we, we moving some money.
We're gonna build all of them on the Chilton, or the, our Joining County land from now on.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Countess Jarnet, transit director.
Good evening, commissioners, commissioners. Uh, I want to, uh, request a resolution to hire a full-time transit operator, uh, as well as to hire a part-time transit operator, uh, due to the holiday seasons coming up, and then also the transit department is opened up, uh, going out of town for medical, uh, reasons. Instead of us doing it two days out of the week, we're now opening it up Monday through Friday, uh, and it's taking one of our drivers away, so we've had a part-time driver there to do it.
And I understand that y'all are doing a lot to help veterans get to doctors and hospitals, or you're working on it.
That's what we working on, and we trying to get that, uh, set in stone, uh, and that was one of the reasons why I'm trying to be proactive instead of reactive.
Very good. Are you replacing operators, or, or is this new hires that you'll be doing this, uh, full-time and part-time? Is that two new people, or?
Well, well, I have some that's hired on right now, it's temporary, uh, sort of officially to see, uh, as their temporary status phases out, uh, that way I can make them full-time along with the county. Uh, that's one of those positions, but the part-time position will be added.
And it's in your budget?
It's within my budget, it is.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, Countess. All right, Heath Sexton, road department.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Let's not start off with the, um, back in March, we had a tornado come through the southwest part of the county, and the county, uh, road department was given a resolution to authorize us to clean up the debris on the roadway. And, uh, this was, this became what we consider an ER event, was, uh, eligible for emergency relief funding from the state. And this construction agreement will reimburse us for the, um, the work done to remove debris off of, um, major collectors, so that's County Road fifteen and, um, sixteen. Next up, I have, um, uh, we've got a letter that the, uh, the AlDOT awarded our FY twenty-six LRSI grant application for sites one and two on County Road fifty-four, so that'll help us, uh, improve a, a sharp curve, um, as well as put up a guardrail and, on a, uh, box culvert. Next up, the commission, uh, budgeted for us because of the excess and work for putting in turnout pipes and drainage work, uh, we're gonna add in, we budgeted for another crew for a truck to haul a tag trailer with a Mini-X. And so here, I have a, um, a quote, uh, for a Kenworth T eight, three-eighty, uh, from Truck Works based on Sourcewell. I have a quote from Trail, for a, uh, from Thompson Truck Source for a Trail King TKT forty tilt tag trailer, and I have a quote from Thompson Tractor utilizing Sourcewell for a Cataphro three oh-nine compact excavator, uh, using, uh, Sourcewell. And so I would ask for approval to purchase those three pieces of machinery. Also, um, leaving this out.
You got a bit, bit of reading material?
So, um, just, uh, this is just some information, um, proposal, that we had talked about, uh, keeping with our, uh, rotation program for our eight dump trucks, our Lowboy truck, Lowboy tractor truck. And, um, when it come time for budgeting, um, based on the, the bid prices and the uncertainty with the, uh, the market, um, for used trucks, we decided to kind of hold off at the time. Uh, since then, there's been an auction at J M Wood, a September auction that went pretty well for used trucks that, uh, with our, with our types of trucks in them. And, um, also, Kenworth is, uh, said they can actually maybe beat their bid price a little bit, so, uh, that would lower the price. And so, um, with those two factors, it might be beneficial to, uh, to consider, uh, keeping with the rotation program. And so in this packet they handed out, um, we have the, uh, the quotes for the, uh, the exact same type of trucks we have now, uh, and, uh, dump bodies, um, as well as the same Lowboy tractor truck. Our, our trucks are actually two years old, will be two years old, about two years old come March. And that is, uh, we'd wanna take, if we ordered them, we'd wanna sell the surplus and sell our old trucks, our existing trucks in the, uh, March auction. So anyway, you have the, the quotes as well on, on each piece of equipment, as well as, uh, did reach out to J M Wood, and they do offer counties a guarantee to help them budget. And, uh, usually their guarantees are conservative, uh, 'cause they, you know, I'm not sure what will happen in the market between now and March, but, uh, they did provide us a guarantee to, uh, help us, assist us with our decision. And, um, so at the front page, I have, uh, just if you're interested in adding that, I've got the resolution that would allow us to, um, to, uh, keep with this program for all the trucks, as well as, uh, make the changes to the budget as needed for these, for this change, and, um, also authorize us to use the J M Wood auction and, uh, and purchase the, uh, dump trucks through a lease purchase agreement, and a Lowboy truck through a direct purchase.
What are those, what are the prices? Are they in here for the new trucks?
I did add on the back, the back two pages, um, they provided us kind of a breakdown with how they came up with that guarantee. They will not give a guarantee.
No, no, I'm talking about what it would cost us to replace these trucks, the new trucks will replace these with.
Yeah, that's on, that's on that buyer's order, ain't it?
Yes, it is. It's on the buyer's order.
Buyer's order, one point four?
Well, if you actually look on the, it's on the third page at the very bottom, it says what the, uh, average truck costs.
Yeah, a hundred ninety-three thousand?
Nope, uh, third page.
Third page.
One seven.
At the very bottom.
Two eighteen, two eighteen.
Is there an interest rate for the, uh, lease purchase?
No, that would have to be advertised, and we would find out, uh, based on, uh, how people give us quotes based on that advertisement. Um, indications are it might be less than the one we actually have now, 'cause we currently have the eight dump trucks under a lease purchase of five-year. And so we would, uh, also include this, would be, uh, we would, before we sell it, we would pay off the, uh, the five-year notes, we could get the title, and we would, um, advertise for a, uh, another five-year lease purchase for the, for the new trucks.
These, these dump trucks, does this price include the body? One eighty-two, you gotta add the body to it, is it on here?
That would be the bottom price on the third page.
What's the average year before we start having problems? Do you have any idea? Two, three?
Well, um, there's always, when you get new trucks, there's always a little bit of a break-in, so actually, when you first get them, sometimes you'll find like, uh, maybe a wire to's come loose, or a vibrator that's undersized. So you always have a little bit of a break-in period, um, but these trucks have been running, have been running well, but, uh, we've got one that's, who's made miles is fifty-five thousand, so, uh, obviously tires and brakes and...
That's the average, I say every day, but I'm talking about serious.
Engines and so forth.
Yeah, uh, Commissioner Hedley might know more about that, 'cause the county, he was here before the county had the rotation program.
So, Heath, are there guarantees?
It, it's, it's, it's probably goes on to end about, I'd say, a year and a, year and a half, maybe two years, but now, when it starts.
Starts.
It's, it's, it's drastic, so that's the reason we started rotating them every year, and we don't have that maintenance. We was doing enough in maintenance on them trucks to buy new trucks.
Wow.
If we wouldn't have been trading.
So is there guarantee, basically, an even swap?
No, sir, no, sir, it's not.
Where, where you, where you at on the, the guarantee plus the, whatever it's gonna cost us?
I think the net, net's about, gonna be about two seventy.
On page, is page three the buyer's order, the one point seven four five?
That would be the amount for the...
Commissioner Childress has done some figuring on these guys.
And again, I did, I had, uh, I'm guessing about the, the price of the, uh, of the Lowboy, of the Lowboy.
What's included in that?
I know, but that's one sixty, you're thinking?
Yeah, I included the, uh, breaking on the back pages.
And then the purchase of the, of the new one is gonna be one ninety-three, four hundred.
Oh, I got you.
So...
So it's not?
I think our net, net's gonna end up being about two seventy-ish, so, uh, it's gonna cost us about two seventy.
Yes, and I, uh...
No, 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 totally net-net.
Okay.
Yeah, we...
For eight, eight trucks. Well, actually, nine trucks.
Eight, it's nine.
It'd be less.
If you put that nine in the two seventy...
But our current, our current balance on our lease is a, a million and a half, right?
We have been paying the principal on it for a year and a half, so I'm not exactly sure what the principal is, how many remaining that we've...
So the warranty, I, I'm, the warranty on those trucks are, what, two years?
We looked it up on the, um, we looked this today, I think the overall, the entire truck is warranted for one year, but I think like the engine is, is two years, and the transmission, three, something like that.
So we've got one that's up about fifty-five, so we'll double that by the time we're able, if we were to delay and consider this a year from now, we'd have one that's a hundred thousand, right? Now, we're looking at tires, and tires, I don't know if y'all probably tires like this particular, so I mean, they're up thirty percent, you know? And so, I, I, I'd, I'd like to consider this, but I don't know about tomorrow night. And maybe Heath, we can get together tomorrow in the, in the office and, you know, crunch some numbers. I don't know if the ladies have time to do that.
Well, unless there's, unless there is a reason we need to go do this tomorrow night, we will hold this until the next meeting. If we need, do we need to, is there a reason we need to do this tomorrow night?
Well, uh, one of the reasons we're getting a little bit better deal is because Kenworth, um, went ahead and, and purchased trucks ahead of time and, uh, trying to sell those, so that's why they're offering this. I don't know if they'll be available, how much longer they'll be available, but they might be.
So they're offering this, so what, what would the price be if they weren't offering us a deal? Do you know that?
Thirty thousand more, twenty-eight thousand, something more.
Per truck?
Per truck.
Well, that's, uh, that's a good reason to go ahead.
We're used to going to get to the office.
Yeah.
'Cause something, I mean, we weren't planning on doing it, so I don't know if we budgeted for that.
We didn't, I don't think we, we'd have to...
What would this do to our numbers if we went ahead and did this? This gonna change, you know, basically rolling these over, so it's gonna be, what, it's changing the numbers?
Just two hundred thousand dollars.
This, this actually would not hurt us any at all, because, um, right now, the trucks are financed, and we've been paying for principal, so if we were to pay them off, we'd actually get some principal out of them. And we would be leasing the, uh, new trucks, so it would be just, it would be going from a three, the remaining three, three and a half years that we've got debt going back to a five years of, of the lease.
Let's look at the numbers on that tomorrow, make sure that we're, we're close to even. I don't, I don't mind extending the term, but if we're gonna increase our debt, I'm not, significantly increase our debt, I, I don't know. I might think about that.
That's pretty much been the consensus that we told our office staff, we've been not, unless it was absolute mercy, extend our budget.
It'll have money in this budget, but...
You'll have money in your budget for this?
No, hang on.
Mm-mm.
Let me...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I tell you what, let Heath answer that. But I know there's money there, but we, it's cause, it's cause of disposable money.
Well, you had, he had a reason to entertain it, though.
There's money in there for something else that we can move, that if, if we're gonna end up on the net, net side of this, and we need to stay in the budget this year. But Heath, Heath knows the numbers better than I do.
Just be careful, don't think you saving, 'cause when you start getting them breakdowns, you gonna say, my goodness, this done eat up all we saved, and then some.
Sure, I agree.
'Cause that, that, uh...
This, this was emailed to us this afternoon at three, so we had...
It's Hampton.
That's right, I'm, and I'm, and I, again, I got as quick as I, I have, and, uh, I've also talked to Commissioner Williams about some of this to begin with. I know he wanted me to get some final numbers, which just came in, and he also wanted me to talk to our new shop foreman, who, um, gave his recommendation that we do that this, this would be a good thing.
Yeah, 'cause I, I, I didn't figure that you were entertaining, if you didn't think it would. They have questions, some questions I can't answer, but I trust your judgment on entertaining it, because that, that's a lot of work right there.
I didn't mean to slight anything you done, Heath, and I didn't realize until just a little while ago, you only got this today.
Right, yes.
When will the new trucks be available?
Um, I was told these actual trucks with on the, the buyer's order that they gave us were being built today.
When would they?
Which, um...
Would we have to pay anything until we receive them?
No, you don't pay anything till you receive them, and they give you an invoice, and you have thirty days to pay the first payment.
So we could be, you say start building today? We could be how long before they, we receive them?
After they're built today, they'll probably be there for a week or so before that, uh, Kenworth will pick them... After they're built today, they'll probably be there for a week or so before that, uh, Kenworth pick them up and take them to Logan, um, to put the bodies on. And, uh, we would let, um, I guess they've already got the bodies repaired, but we will let them know if we need a panel hitch or the high lift gate or the vibrators to make that custom change for us. Um, but they're saying that they could be here as early as, um, January.
Okay, so we only got three months, two, three months then.
And as far as, um. Uh, the Lowboy truck from Mac, he said the same thing, that he could have it here, uh, January as well.
What I'm getting at is if we got the Woods auction coming up in March. And if we look at surplus and anything there, I'm trying to see what, even with the money, that's what I'm getting at. We didn't have to pay anything to receive the trucks, then if we get something, if we surplus something through Woods.
All right, you're saying you're concerned about paying the title, paying off the lease before the sale?
No, well, that's, that's one thing, if we receive those trucks, we'll need to, but if we don't receive them. You're saying that we don't have to pay anything until we receive the trucks.
Oh, correct, correct.
Yeah. We'd have to pay the loan.
Oh, well, you'd have to pay, um, yes, ideally right before the auction, you would pay the, uh, the existing loan off so that you can get the title to give to J M Wood for them to give to the new.
We should get something out of that auction, correct?
It would be a guarantee if we went this route.
Yeah, like one point seven.
We would be guaranteed. That they would gross sell for one seven seven.
One one seven, if they hold our check for thirty-four months.
What's that?
Will they hold our check for thirty-four?
Oh, no, they usually pay within, um, two to three weeks.
I'm talking about us paying them.
He's wanting to hold our.
Yes, they usually give you a good thirty days before the, they give you a good thirty days.
I say we give.
And, and not only that, for the majority of it, the dump trucks, I would recommend that we go back with another five year lease. So the bank would technically, um, pay them and we would just be paying the payments to the bank.
I'm just trying to keep us in budgets. If we have to go this route.
Well, we, we do have it budgeted for bank, to make, uh, yeah, that's what you're saying. All right, we'll talk more about tomorrow if you want to, Commissioner Childress. The, uh, next item I've got is, um, last year we applied for a Atrip two, uh, grant. And this grant, uh, gives us two million dollars on a state road. And, uh, we applied for the, uh, improvements to the intersection of State Road one ninety-one and County Road fifty. Due to the, uh, uh, reoccurring accidents there, uh, what we believe mainly is because of a, uh, limited sight distance. For vehicles on County Road fifty looking northbound on, on one ninety-one. There's a, uh, a steep hill with a curve and, uh, matter of fact, I, I looked in the, uh, our crash data. And that's, and since our last application, there's been, um, seven accidents here. Um, uh, some of the descriptions of the driver said they looked both ways and did not see the oncoming traffic over the, the, um, the hill. Um, a witness says it appeared the driver never saw approaching vehicles due to the steep curve in the roadway. Um, of course, there was one under the influence, um, but either way, that's, that seems to be a high number. A high, high number of, of accidents, and we hope that, um, Aldott, um, would consider this, um, or at least take note of it. Um, so I would ask approval to put in that application. And then just for project updates, if y'all have any questions on that, the project seemed to be going well, uh, we're waiting on our permanent striping still. Uh, we heard that forty-nine, the contractor's supposed to come midweek, so we'll see. Um, and, uh, County Road sixteen, of course, has been, uh, had the full depth recognition with a chip seal, so, uh, we'll wait about thirty days. And the contractor had then put on the, uh, the wearing surface. Um, and of course, forty-three, we finished the chip seal on it. Um. So any questions on the projects?
Um, sixteen is amazingly better. I rode out there Sa- Saturday.
Twenty-three is fantastic.
Oh, yeah.
I, I would like to clarify that County Road thirty is getting repaved.
Why you need to do that?
I just, just have personal interest in it. That, that we clarify that.
Is that the road you live on?
It's not my road I live on.
Oh.
It's your fault.
Didn't I say that?
No, I live on ninety-seven. But, uh, yeah, there, there may or may not have been some confusion online about County Road thirty, so it's getting repaid.
All right, thank you, Commissioner.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
One thing I forgot to ask a while ago is also that stuff, ask for a resolution to send that stuff out to bid, those grants. And, uh, I got a phone call off of Mayor Memes, uh, got a phone call with a, a person tomorrow. The Amish are, have bought about a hundred fifty acres on County Road thirty.
Yeah.
Uh, so we're going to talk to them tomorrow, I don't know what that is, I don't know if it's, they're asking for like signage or what, what we're going to be dealing with on that, but, uh. Just wanted to bring it to y'all's, y'all's attention.
Yeah, I asked somebody, did it, was it you, I asked Heath about, uh, horse and buggy? Did we find any? We went and put signs up, I can tell you, I've, I've, I've driven a truck coming out of a curve and there's a horse and buggy clippity clopping. It's not a fun thing.
No, it's not, especially on County Road thirty seven.
Yeah, that's not going to be a good spot there.
That's what I said.
Just wanted to bring, I don't know what, we're going, supposed to talk to them in the mornings, I don't know what that'll be about, but just wanted to bring that to y'all's attention.
Now, you want to talk to him, you and. You and.
The mayor, Mayor Memes, he, he's been wanting to call me about it this afternoon, so I'm not really sure, I, I guess maybe somebody he knows or something that, you know, requested a meeting with me, so. Don't, I don't really know anything other than that right now, so. I'll talk to him and know a little bit more about it tomorrow after the phone call.
I'm sure you'll be passing information on.
I will, I will. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, uh, Commissioner reports, Commissioner Billingsley.
No, sir.
Uh, Commissioner Bone is not here, for those of you who do not know, having a kidney stone is like birthing a baby, I'm told. And he is having excruciating pains with a kidney stone, as witnessed by myself and Commissioner Childress today. Okay, uh, Commissioner Childress.
Uh, yes, sir, a little update on the, uh, animal shelter. Evidently, uh, the Humane Society of Shelby County has closed, uh, intake. And, um, we are getting requests from Shelby County residents to take animals, and we cannot do that. We're, number one, we're not going to, but we're, we're, we cannot do that. And so, uh, if you have relatives in Shelby County or whatever that are asking about our shelter, uh, we're, we're not going to be able to accept those animals. The, um, uh, last, let's see, I, I can't remember if it was last week, the weeks go by fast these days, like, like, like days. I can't remember if it was last week or the week before, we, we took in like seventy-one, uh, animals in five days. So it's, uh, there's just a lot of strays out there. Uh, we've got people that are out there rounding up, uh, cats and dogs, I guess they're tired of them and bringing them, uh, to the shelter, and we're trying to manage those as best that we can. So, uh, I would just ask for the, uh, so the county consider staying near your animals and, and, uh. And, because this is expensive for, this is never going to be a money maker. This is always going to be a cost to the taxpayers of the county. And it's just, it's amazing how much money it costs to, uh, house and, and shelter these animals. And I'll say this, this may sound mean, but we're animal control, we try to operate as an animal shelter. But animal control is about controlling the animals just for public human safety. And we want to be, uh, as kind and humane to the animals as we possibly can, but this is about, uh, you know, human safety. We're protecting our citizens first and foremost. Um, and they're doing a great job of, of managing those, uh, those animals down there. They're trying to get as many out, uh, adopted, they're, they've created, uh, relationships with different rescues out of Birmingham and out of, uh, Tennessee, I think it is, and Georgia. And a lot of these animals, uh, are being adopted out. The, um, but it's, it's just, it's overwhelming, and we'll cycle to where we've got control, and then all of a sudden, we get a damn load of animals. Um, so, uh, please consider that. The, um, other thing that I need to bring to your attention is that the, um, Board of Education has sent, and this is in your, it's the last page, I think, in, in your binder. Board of Education has sent a request for us to, uh, um, support their proposed move. This is for the city of Thorsby and the school there. The proposed move of County Road fifty, uh, one block down to, uh, and that would be moving it from, let's see. Concordia, no, from Opportunity Drive, Concordia Street to, uh, what is considered Franklin Street that runs up by the park. And they're about to build a new school there on the lower, what we used to call the lower, we called it the forty, but there's no forty acres down there. But, uh, uh, it's where we practiced Peewee football when, when I was a little kid up there, but that'll be a new school. And so traffic patterns are going to change, and this will be a whole lot safer for the students and for the, uh, the, uh, citizens of Thorsby and anybody traveling through. But it'd be the relocation of County Road fifty, uh, about a block down to Franklin Street. And they're just asking us to support that Atrip, uh, proposal. This is Aldott asking for us, our, or, for them to ask us for their support. So I would, uh, I'm going to put this in the form of a motion tomorrow night, and I hope that we can approve that and, and get that to, it won't be mailed directly to, uh, Aldott. I'll take it to the superintendent and the superintendent will put it in their packet, um, and they'll present that, then transfer it to Aldott.
No cost to us.
So they're moving the road, they're not closing the road?
No.
Good, very good question, they, they're not closing it, they're closing it to through traffic. So, uh, the Concordia, which runs there by the school, uh, which would be Memes, Old Memes Grocery Store. And, uh, um, and then the, the White Church, the Old Church, the street will run there and then, uh, service the school. And then it will, it, then that road, it won't be closed, but it'll be closed to through traffic, only the school traffic. All the way down to where their practice field is, where that, uh, there's like a four or five way down there at the bottom of that hill, where as you're turning and head it out to Page Chapel. In that curve, you've got Dakota that's coming down, and so at the football field, that will, that will change. County Road fifty will turn and go up the south side of the practice field. And, and so the old, uh, fifty-one or, or Concordia will service only the school and the res, a couple of residences that will.
Yeah, I, I'm ready. I know about, I'd really like to look at what, I'd like to look at it.
I'll show you, I'll, I'll show you when I get here.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I have, Chairman.
Yeah, okay.
And again, it does not cost county anything, it's just support. Okay, Commissioner Hall.
Okay, I will be, uh, presenting the recommendation from the interviewing panel for the hiring of Transit Director effective October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, at the pay rate shown on attachment, budgeted.
All right, any questions? All right, anything else? All right, Commissioner Headley.
Nah, I'll just, I'll be giving a, a final year summary for twenty-five tomorrow night for the road.
All right, Commissioner Perkins.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Uh, I only have a couple of, of items real quick, um, that I have to ask the commission about. One is, um, if you have visited Manuka Park, uh, there's been a lot of improvements over the, over the year and the, uh, over the years, actually. And especially this last year, well, one, one thing that we've noticed by, you know, going up there a lot and hanging out and other people have called about this issue is the actual kids playground in the camp, in the campsite area. We have a really nice playground for the kids to be on, and there is no lighting on it. So we had noticed that and we've talked to Donald about it, me and Bones talked about it and, you know, about trying to get some lights. Well, this, over this past couple of weeks, I, um, I received a phone call from a gentleman and they had camped up there and said it was very nice and, and this and that, but there was no lighting on the campground. And that his company was willing to install the lighting at, um, no cost to the county, they'll provide all the material, all the labor. Uh, all they asked for was a little small sign stating the, uh, the fact that they had donated this lighting and put that install in. So I'll be asking for, I guess, a resolution that we allow them to do it. They're a, they're a construction company, they're certified, they're contracted, bonded, insured and all that, so they're all legit, so, uh, I'll be asking for that. And then the only other thing that we have is when we passed the operations manual for the, uh, park, we included a cash handling procedures in that. Um, we had opened the general store, uh, as, uh, credit card only, and we didn't accept cash. We did it, um, we've run it for a little over a month now, trying to get some volume numbers and these kind of things. And it's become obvious that we're going to need to accept cash in the general store. So I'll be asking for a resolution to allow us to, um, have a petty cash policy. Uh, it's mirrored, uh, the same thing that animal control has, so it's just a hundred dollar balance, it's used for change only. Um, yeah, anything over that, you know, of course, goes to a deposit, so that's, that's what I'm going to have tomorrow night.
Um, back to the, uh, lighting.
Mm-hmm.
Do we need to have, uh, indemnification in that, since they're volunteering to do it, they're not going through a bid process?
No, but if they're certified, I'm sure they have their, they have their insurance.
I'd say, do we need, do we need something from them?
I'm sure you'd have to have some sort of something in writing about all this place and what they require.
Yeah, make sure you include that in your resolution.
Oh, well.
We need to get Ben to write it if they don't have it, so we, we're not liable for anything.
Yeah, specifications.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Network?
Well, it's short.
I saw the name.
Uh, the only thing I have is tomorrow night, uh, we will be giving a state of the county address. I think it's something new for the county, so I hope, uh, the public gets some good information from your commission. If all minds are satisfied, see y'all tomorrow night at six thirty.